Good morning. I'd like to call everyone's attention to the June 15, 2021 legislative session and welcome you here today. If we could, I'd like to call the meeting to order, starting with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. With this day our daily bread, forgive us trespasses as we did those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but they risk from the evil, and die in the kingdom, in the power, and glory forever. Amen.
... to the United States of America, and to the republic of what we say is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Ms. Harley, will you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have four items on the consent agenda this morning. We have the legislative minutes from June the 1st, 2021, open work session minutes from April the 20th, 2021 pertaining to the Coombe Quot and Citron Clean Tech LLC proposed 7.20 megawatt solar facility and the process for approving solar projects over 2 megawatts. We have open work session minutes from April the 20th, 2021 pertaining to the West Metro Core Program Open Space Conversion to the Conley Mill property. We have open work session minutes from May the 4th, 2021 pertaining to the reallocation of CARES grant funding.
All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's removed.
You got a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye to consent agenda pass unanimously. Ms. Harley?
The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing, a resolution number 69-2021. This is approving a license agreement between the mayor and commissioners of Delmar, Delmar Little League Incorporated, and Wacomico County, Maryland for property known as the Mason Dixon Sports Complex. And we have Mr. Chuck Russo here, the Deputy Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Okay. This time, we're going to open the floor to the public hearing for this resolution. If there are any comments, please state your name and county of residence. Do we have any comments? Any comments? All right. This time, we're going to close the floor to the public hearing. Need a motion to approve resolution number 69-21?
It's removed.
Need a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of resolution number 69-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Harley? Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing, a resolution number 70-2021. This is to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 5,000 square feet located on 9115 Old Daggsboro Road, Delmar, Maryland. And we have Mr. Tyler Watson here with the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Right. This time, we're going to open the floor to the public hearing for resolution number 70-2021. If there are any public comments, please state your name and county of residence. Do you have any public comments? All right. No public comments. We're going to close the floor to this public hearing. Need a motion to approve resolution number 70-2021?
It's removed.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of resolution number 70-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 70-2021 pass unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Harley?
Thanks for your consideration. It's resolution number 71-2021 evidencing the intent of the county council to appropriate funds and implement the collective bargaining agreement between Wacomico County and the Wacomico County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 111. And we do have the negotiating team here. If there are any questions?
Right. This time, we're going to open the floor to public hearing for resolution number 71-2021. If there are any public comments, please state your name and county of residence. Any comments?
Is it actually a public hearing or just the resolution?
It's a resolution. It's not a public hearing.
Okay. I was thinking this was the public hearing. Well, okay. Do we have any comments?
Your motion is second. Need a motion and a second.
Do we have a motion?
Start over. Right. It's removed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Now, any comments, Mr. Wilber?
Yes. Kevin Karpinski and I would like to brief the council on where we are with this, what's before you to that.
There's a summary that I think is good.
Yes. We've got it.
This has been a long process. I think we're here today to hopefully bring it to a conclusion. The negotiating team-
Can you move the mic closer to you?
Yeah. The negotiating team was Mr. Strasburg and myself and Kevin Karpinski and Pam Olin and Jackie Curry. And John Posoda, of course, was participating. And if Kevin wants to go through this summary-
Well, thank you.
... answering the questions.
Thank you very much. Couple preliminary things. Just by way of history, collective bargaining came into existence in 2010 when the voters overwhelmingly voted to have collective bargaining for the Fraternal Order of Police. And I think we're now on our third or fourth agreement. I understand that the final agreement reached, the council members, yesterday morning. I apologize for that delay. The reality is that, and having, there's nothing that has substantively changed since we briefed the council the two times before. The FOP's attorney took the lead on drafting the substance of the agreement. He had some unexpected delays. So, we got the agreement Wednesday afternoon. Mr. Wilber and I reviewed it Thursday. We brought in the entire negotiating team Friday to finalize it. We got our comments back to the FOP within 48 hours. And then, over the weekend, we finalized the, some of the issues that had come up. For example, when we were doing the negotiating, the discipline legislation for, in terms of the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights, some of that had not been finalized. So, we've worked through all of those items. I think probably the easiest thing for me to do is just to go through the summary quickly and answer any questions you all may have as we go through it. The last agreement was a five-year deal. And that is sort of on the longer side of agreements for the FOP. Ultimately, a three-year deal was reached, and the thought process being that we wanted a shorter window, given the current economic status, not to have the agreement too far out in the future. So, it's a three-year deal. Article 3, so it says "check off," the county had been collecting the FOP dues and then providing them to the FOP, you know, via an accounting. The parties agreed that the FOP will collect their own dues, the county won't be involved in that process. And so, that section, Article 3, was removed. And it was replaced with Article 3, which is union rights. And that, just in essence, is the sheriff's office agreeing to allow access for the FOP to do some of its business at the sheriff's office. Article number 5E, wages. Currently, canine handlers were paid under the last agreement for 30 minutes, or they could leave 30 minutes earlier. That has been increased to an hour. And that was done after consideration of what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of providing time for their canine handlers. And so, the parties agreed to an hour because that seems consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing. Is that 5E or 5? Or 5, or is that 6? Online, it's 6. You said 5. 6E wages. Modified canine pay from 30 minutes to an hour. All right. You said 5E. I apologize. Okay. It's 6E. Article 8 is just changing the duration of the new contract dates. The big item is Article 17, wage scale. This is the wage scale that was presented to the council when Mr. Wilber and Mr. Strasburg briefed the council initially. So, that scale has not changed at all. I'd like to kind of walk through the thought process in the scale itself. As some of the members may recall, five years ago, the agreement that was reached with the FOP was a little, it was top-heavy for those that were on the higher, had been with the sheriff's office a longer period of time. So, in negotiating the scale, a couple of things were sort of at the forefront of our thoughts, which was, the first was to make sure that the scale itself is competitive with other jurisdictions in the area. So, we looked at what other jurisdictions are paying. We agree that there should be a slight increase to get deputies because it's becoming harder and harder to recruit. So, to incentivize getting deputies was also something that was important to do and then to provide some, there was some scale compression in terms of wages and to free that up a little bit so that it was, when you go from one step to another, it's more consistent. So, overall, it's an 8% COLA. Over the last five years, the county has given 13% COLAs to county employees. It is, has 5% title growth up through the rank of corporal and, it's just 7% title growth up through the rank of corporal and then 5% for sergeant and first sergeant. So, there'd be greater growth on the lower end of the scale, and then it lowers by 2%. And then, there's step growth of 3% between each step on the scale itself.
Would there be, I haven't had a chance to read this. I've gotten about page 5. Had some small questions. Would there be a cost of living put in for every year? Because evidently, I guess, there was no cost of living in the prior contract, and that's why we got so far behind? So, is there, I'm just guessing at that, too. But is there a cost of living now built into this agreement?
Well, sort of. Because when you go from one step to the other, it'll be a 3% step each, on each way. So, yeah. So, that's kind of built into the cost of living. There's no true cost of living, but it's, there's step increases throughout. There are a number of individuals, in terms of steps, that are at the end of their, once we go ahead and move them to their proper step, they will be at step 18. So, for 2000, they're going to be put on their correct step. And then, for 2013, 2023, there'll be a $1,500 longevity payment because they'll be at the end of their step. And what was negotiated was in 2024, it'll either be $1,500 or no more than 3% of the CPI U for those that are at, that are basically maxed out at their step. So, Pam could certainly explain this. Everyone's going to be put on their correct step, including the lateral hires, so that they're all where they should have been. So, for this new agreement, starting July 1, they would be on the step they're supposed to be. In total, it's about $833,000 with benefits. It's about 1.1 million. And again, this was done after considering what is being paid by other jurisdictions in the area. So, it's the competitive going rate for what officers are being paid, with the understanding that, given the number of officers that are at a maximum step, the sheriff's office is going to have to make a concerted effort to recruit moving forward and get new officers, younger officers, in. And so, that's the wage scale, which is at Exhibit B to the agreement itself. Article 18 is overtime and hours. And this was simply more of a, this is a scheduling issue internal to the sheriff's office. They said they didn't have a problem doing. But in essence, if there's less than seven hours, there'd be a minimum of at least seven hours between your shifts, or you get to report later for your next shift. The FOP wanted that as a, you know, as a right, and the sheriff's office said they didn't have a problem doing that. And so, that was included in the agreement. Administrative leave to do FOP activities for the FOP team was increased from 200 to 300 hours under Article 22. Under Article 26, it says lodge security. That's basically a service fee that was being paid in some FOPs. There's a Supreme Court decision called Janus that found that the service fees for public sector unions are unconstitutional. So, that section was removed from the agreement because it's no longer applicable. Section 26 regarding grievances, the parties agreed that 14 days, 15 days really was not enough time to go from one step to another. The hope would be to resolve these grievances without escalating to another step because there hadn't been sufficient time to go ahead and work through the grievance. So, the period of time was increased from 15 to 30 days. And then, if it cannot be resolved, an arbitrator would be selected within 15 days. Article 28 involved pension. The pension, in terms of a pension disability, it was not set up very efficiently. There was a subcommittee that was in place, and then a medical advisory board that would review it and then make a recommendation of the personnel board. The thought process, the collective thought process, was that really the medical advisory board really should be the ones making decisions on medical issues. So, the subcommittee has been removed. The medical advisory board's decision will be final, and that someone can then, if someone is aggrieved by that decision, they can appeal that to the circuit court for Wacomico County. So, we've kind of cut out two layers of that process. The decisions will be made by the experts, and the FOP will be given the right to have one member sit on that medical advisory board. And the county will select the other members. But it just seemed to be a more efficient streamlined way to resolve those, the accidental disability pension issues. After we've agreed on wages and some of the more significant items in terms of cost, one of the things we wanted to do was to go back and address issues concerning ambiguities that have occurred over the last five years. And so, what the last 60 days really have been is to try and address communication issues that have arisen, where there has been perhaps not uniform application for each deputy on certain issues. One of those issues involves workers' compensation and what is payable when you get an accident, accidental disability pension. And so, we wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page. For example, you're supposed to, you know, is the repayment amount for your worker's compensation, is it the gross amount that is awarded to the deputy? Or is the net amount? In other words, is it, is it what the deputy was awarded minus their attorney's fees, minus experts, and then what actuarial analysis would go into that? We have agreed that it's going to be the gross amount that would have to be repaid, and that it was important that the actuary analysis that's used for every other county employee be applied with regard to determining what is the repayment for this accidental disability pension. So, in essence, if one gets an accidental disability pension, they'll have to repay the gross amount, and the actuary will apply the same analysis that's applied for any other county employee for retirement purposes. Drop was implemented five years ago. I think candidly, it was inserted into the plan, but there was no planned document, really, that explained what is drop, who's eligible for it, what you need to do to apply for it. We've come up with a drop brochure that explains all that. So, that ambiguity that existed and confusion that existed with regard to the drop program has been cleared up. And that's at Exhibit D, the proposed amendments. There will be a couple of important things. There was an arbitrator's decision that basically said military credit will be given for eligibility purposes. So, you can have up to five years of military credit applied to reach drop. Or you can get five years by service in the reserves while employed by Wacomico County. So, you can get up to five years of military credit in order to reach retirement eligibility for purposes of drop. And so, that has been clarified in this new agreement. And one thing that was missing from the, when drop was originally put in was that there was no drop window. Most jurisdictions that have drop, they have a window that itself, basically have to go ahead and enter it within a certain period of time, or you lose the right to participate in drop. So, the parties bargained to set up a window. And that window is, if you have the five years of military service, you have between 20 and 25 years to elect to participate in drop. And if you don't have military services, 25 to 30 years. And if you've been with the county sheriff's office for 30 years already, you have one year from the effective date of this agreement to enter drop if you wish to participate in it. So, it establishes a window, which I think is of great benefit to the county and was something that needed to be established. In addition, there was some confusion how you applied unused sick leave in terms of, in terms of getting your pension benefits. And as you'll see from Exhibit D, we've specifically addressed how that calculation works with regard to unused sick leave and how it will affect your pension benefits once you enter drop. And the last item was the 457 Plan, the Bolton Fees. There was an arbitrator's decision that the Bolton Fee, the FOP did not have to pay the Bolton Fee because there was not proper notice given to the FOP, and that it was a reduction in their overall benefits. And there's a section in the agreement that talks about preservation of one's benefits. The county has always been generous in giving a 20% match, and that has occurred historically. What has been negotiated is, as long as the 20% match is given to the county, all county employees, the FOP will pay the Bolton Fees associated with that particular plan. If the 20% match is dropped, then there's a per rata reduction in the amount of fees that they'd have to pay. So, for example, if the drop, the percentage went from 20% to 10%, and the fee was, overall fee was 3%, the fee would go down to 1.5%. And so, that was done, and there was a new section added with regard to actuarial calculations because there have been issues raised by some of the FOP members, that there have been delays in getting their actuarial calculations. And so, we wanted to try and address that. That's, again, more of a better communications issue. But part of this process has to make, been to make sure that there is better communication, better clarity on, you know, disability benefits, drop, actuarial calculations, so that the county and the sheriff's office are seen as good partners moving forward, that there's not this confusion as it relates to what one's benefits are. And I think we've done that, and we've addressed that in this agreement. I think this agreement makes the sheriff's office competitive, and obviously, one of the most important areas that can be provided by government, which is public safety. And I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that were left unaddressed or were ambiguous in the last agreement that was done five years ago. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. All right. Questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments? Mr. Cannon?
It's real small stuff, really. Very small stuff. The, in the liaison committee, there's four members, two representatives from the employer appointed by the sheriff and two representatives appointed by the FOP. It's Article 5.
Article 5.
Yeah. Joint Labor Management Liaison Committee. Says that there shall be established a Joint Labor Management Liaison Committee consisting of two representatives of the employer appointed by the sheriff and two representatives designated by the FOP. Why was it decided that the sheriff would make those appointments as opposed, I might not understand this, as opposed to the administration, like the county executive or something?
That is a good question. That is a carryover provision from the old agreement. And I'm, I don't have the institutional knowledge on why that was decided.
I was just curious. I just thought that, yes, Michael?
Yes. I wanted to appoint-
Grab a mic over there. Thanks.
Sheriff Mike Lewis, Wacomico County. I've always appointed Chief Deputy Gary Baker and Captain Todd Richardson, who is my administrative captain, so they could settle this forward to explain the operating aspects of the office to see if we could, in fact, compromise with some of the requests being made.
Yeah. The reason I ask, because I always thought that any issues that the FOP might have had really might not have been with management and the sheriff's department, because you do such a great job. But, that was a joke. But with the, actually with the county administration as a whole and what they were, you know, with their restrictions. That's why I asked that question. So.
I think this is an internal, I mean, there are a lot of matters that get addressed internally that don't make it to HR, to the county necessarily, because they're resolved operationally within the sheriff's office. And Gary Baker and Todd Richardson head that up.
The other question I had isn't really related to this, I don't think, but just out of curiosity, when a new deputy comes in, is a deputy required to join the union? Or is that an option? Not required?
They're not required. No. Any more questions or comments? Is that it, Mr. Cannon?
Well, I'd only say, as we've said before, we haven't read this. And, but I really do appreciate the summary that you've given us. And I feel comfortable with it. I really do. I have a lot of respect for the work you do, Mr. Karpinski, and always have. And of course, I don't think we'd want to hold up the deputies. We know that several deadlines were missed. I think back in April, there was some information that was actually by code, I believe, that was required to be, you know, filed with the council. And we haven't seemed to follow those procedures, but I'm assuming that it's not out of line and it can't be something legally challenged since-
We're comfortable with where we are.
Okay. That's good. I am glad to see that, you know, we've got the workman's comp out of the way. We've got those issues, the pensions, the actuaries, the drop issue, and the military credit. Because, believe me, that's been going on for a while.
Certainly has.
And it's created unnecessary headaches for both sides, right? I'd also hope that, you know, should this get through, it's a great measure. I just hope that we would also keep in mind to try to address the existing issues, keeping in mind also that we respect the fact that the attorneys do represent the county as a government body. But we also want to keep in mind that it's very important that the county as a government body also treat our employees fairly. And I would love to see issues resolved without having to go through litigation on so many of these issues that, or the couple of issues that may still be outstanding. Okay?
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, and I think we've spent a lot of time on that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the county's negotiating team as well as the FOP. This has been a very, I think, collegial process. It's certainly not contentious like it was five years ago. We've had a lot of productive dialogue back and forth, and there's been a lot of compromise. There were, I think, 14 or 15 items, a lot of them were taken off the table because it was seen that they could handle those issues internally within the sheriff's office. And then we really worked on the salaries and then working on making sure that we don't have to get through, get to a grievance process, because it's not only expensive, but it's also, it just is very divisive, and it's just obviously very important to avoid it.
All right. Is that it, Mr. Cannon?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Ms. Harley?
I just want to point out that the resolution in the briefbook has been updated, so the resolution that you're actually voting on today is the one that's on the council table, and the date of ratification was added. That was the only change.
Okay. I did have a question with this resolution. It says, whereas the term of the collective bargaining agreement is for a period of three years commencing on July 1st, 2021, ending June 30th, 2024, with automatic renewals from year to year thereafter unless either party shall give the other party written notice of a desire to terminate, modify, or amend the agreement, how long will this be going on?
This is a three-year agreement.
Right, but it says automatically after each year.
That language parrots what's in the collective bargaining agreement.
Right, and we didn't get the collective bargaining agreement until yesterday, so not all of us have been able to digest it in its entirety.
So, Council President Dodd, the reality is, quite frankly, what happens is the FOP provides notice before the expiration, you know, back in January, and says they would like to begin negotiating. So it automatically renews if no one does that, but the reality of it is every FOP says the time for negotiations begins, and they provide notice that they're going to do it.
Okay.
It's never gone into an automatic renewal.
Okay. Everybody ready? Before we vote, I would like to thank the FOP committee and the collective bargaining committee on both sides. I think they did a lot of work, a lot of time has been invested in this, and that's why Mr. Cannon said we have confidence in the attorneys that worked on this as well. So, all in favor of Resolution Number 71-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 71-2021 passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This time, we're going to open the floor to public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to the council members. If you do so, please include 10 copies. No derogatory comments, personal attacks, obscene language, or disruptive behavior, please. Do you have any public comments? Yes, please go to the mic. Yes, ma'am.
Hidden behind the podium. Thank you very-
I saw your hand go up.
As you all know from our prior experience-
Your name and county.
I'm Carol Donahue, Wycomico County. And as you know from our prior appearances before this board, both of the environmental organizations based in the county, the Friends- are very concerned about the environmental and public health and safety issues that have been raised by the gas- we saw the item on the agenda for our session. Our agricultural storage tanks in the county, and we're assuming that you're talking about- we're assuming a way perhaps, and we wanted to make sure that everyone understands other perspectives on that. The- that speaks to that, of course, because we're in Wycomico County, some expert representing the neighbors of the town, his legal analysis- of the county, the current code requires that a tank- and that implies that replacement in the agricultural system is appropriate- tank that was attended by several of you, not by the neighbors.
Can you speak louder?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, it's not your fault, the mic's not working.
The mic's not on, okay. We understand that there was a recent meeting at the tank that was attended by several of you, although not by the neighbors, and there was a question asked, I think by a representative of planning and zoning about- and the response to- that it's going to be- forward to the process all of its half. And it seems to- there's a matter of community that has, that we can do this more than we can do that we can do this more than we can do. That's true, anytime you have organic matter, and there's a cost, that creates a new environment, that's really better, that it can actually continue to be- so we wanted to put that on the record. We started to have to continue to maintain, consider, continue, there was very little tank pressure, so there are people that are starting to care, so that's what I think we need to start, the tank pressure, and so it's all the same, all the same. And it'll be our challenge to do this, to do this, and to make sure that you're not-
Thank you very much. You have any more public comments? If you would, take one of these mics up here, because that one is not working. Please state your name and your county.
I'm Lou Delinsley. I live in Wycomico County. I'm a real, I am a licensed Realtor and have been licensed since 1976. And I'm here because we have a problem in Wycomico County that needs to be addressed long-term, but also immediately. This January, I received a contract on my listing in Timberlake, and unfortunately, we'd had a ton of water, rain, and the septic system failed. The Health Department came out and they made a, their proposal was a mound system, which is what they favor a lot lately. Timberlake, if you all know it, is a heavily wooded subdivision, has lots of landscaping, and unfortunately for this particular seller, it, the backyard where the system has to be is small. And the Health Department proposed an 84 by 32-foot mound system that would come up almost abutting the patio, and the mound system would have been four, five feet tall. It would also entail cutting down almost all of the trees in the backyard, and the price for that was $30,000. Both the buyer and the seller said no, they did not want a sand mound, a mound system in the backyard, and so we start, they started looking for another, another system. They did find one from the Orenco system online, and they had, they found their own engineer because we thought maybe it would speed up the process if we had our own engineer's stamp of approval on the system, which we got. And then in the course of that, we discovered that this system was already approved in Maryland and also in the northern parts of the eastern shore, but not, but it seemed to be a new thing to Wycomico Health Department. That was January, and this is June 15th, and we still don't have approval. We've sent it to the, we've sent the papers, the diagrams, everything, to the Health Department, to the state MDE, and they, they're, we're getting such a small amount of cooperation that we really, I'm appealing to you all, if there's something that you can do that can help us move these things along faster. I do have a recommendation or two. When the, when the mound system is proposed by the Health Department, it, and it's, and to the, to the owner of the property, I think they ought to also be, be giving us guidance on what is available, what, what BAT systems, best available technology is available, so that we can have a choice of saying, look, we want to pursue this level. The system that we were proposing is so environmentally friendly that it takes up less, less space in the backyard, it goes down deep, and it cleans the water to such a level that you could use it as a, on your sprinkler system, it's so clean. If, if, if there are BAT systems that are approved throughout the state, surely there ought to be at least a little bit of explanation about that here locally, so that we can look at this and see what can be done. And then the Health Department, knowing that that BAT system has already been approved statewide, should be preparing the alternative plans for that, so that we don't have to hire an engineer to do this. And then, and then we need the timely approval from the state. We're very fortunate to have, I'm very, we're very fortunate to have a buyer who has hung in there for six months while we try to fight the, well, I shouldn't say fight, while we try to get this thing settled. And so if you all can help us, that would be really great.
We've been working on this for quite some time.
I know you have, and, and I appreciate the, I appreciate all that you all have been doing about this, but there are a lot, Wycomico County's buildings, Wycomico County development grew in the 80s and 90s, and all the homes that we're looking at primarily on the western, on the west side of the county, were built in the 80s and 90s. Those systems are now going to fail because they're 30-year, 20, 30-year systems, and we're now exceed, they're now exceeding their, their lifetime. And the Health Department is proposing mound systems. They're ugly. There's nothing nice about them, and, and they, and very often, they're going to take up the, all of the backyards, or front yard, heaven forbid they have to be in the front yard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comments? It's, okay, come to one of these mics, if you would, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This really works. Good morning. My name is Monica Brooks, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm a member of Concerned Citizens Against Industrial CAFOs. I'm here in consideration of your upcoming work session and discussion regarding the agricultural storage tanks and zoning. With the topic listed as zoning of certain large agricultural storage tanks, I'd like to speak on behalf of our residents in the county that are opposed to these agricultural storage tanks. These tanks, while these tanks are regulated under agriculture, we believe they should be regulated as industrial and thereby placed in industrial zones. The release of the methane gas has been shown to be on par with the toxic releases of a coal plant. On top of the amount of methane and biogas being released into the atmosphere, they also have to contend with the diesel trucks and that pollution to the air. The residents that we have here in Wycomico County off Porter Mill and Riggins Road have shared their tragic stories of what they're facing, the sickening smells overrun by flies, loss of quality of life, as well as hearing trucks, diesel trucks up and down the roads at all hours of the night. A new study has been released that shows that there are a greater number of deaths from agricultural pollution than from coal. So we asked that you please consider the health impacts to our residents, not to mention the higher nitrate levels in land application, because that manure still has to go somewhere, and that you reconsider any thoughts of legislation related to these until there's much greater study done, cumulative impacts, health impacts, as well as the fact that because we're talking about biogas, this is a fuel, and therefore it's an industry. It should be regulated as an industry, and it should not just be umbrellaed under agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
My name is Cynthia Dougherty. I live on Porter Mill Road in Hebron, Maryland, Wycomico County. First, I want to, I really appreciate the comments made previously. I don't know that lady, but I, I thank her for her comments, and also Ms. Donahue's. We've been at this now for close to two years. I find it suspect that this far into it, that planning and zoning is- I find it suspect that this far into it, that planning and zoning is bringing a proposal for zoning change. I find the timing suspect in that it occurs not long after our attorney has sent the council and the executive department a detail of his legal arguments as to why the zoning of, or the, the tank being put where it is is a problem with the zoning, and that it is industrial rather than agriculture. What I would, you know, you remember the things that you hear latest and kind of forget the things that were said before. That tank is being used throughout, except, yes, it's being used throughout the year. Regardless, I mean, we, it's not just something we're saying. We have sent you pictures. It, it is, doesn't just smell at, when it is being disturbed and put on the fields in, in March and in December. Some of you have been out there when it was being agitated, and I believe have documented that and know that smell. I appreciate the traffic counters that the county put up because for whatever reason during that time, there was very, very little traffic, truck traffic. The traffic has started to return. It certainly has been much heavier at other times, but it's going on now. I took a picture of a tanker up there on my way in. There was one yesterday when I was driving by. And I'm not sitting there counting when they are coming in, but it's going on now. I think you've been told that this is not, this is not the time that it would be used. It's only used during certain times of the year. It's not the case. There's documentation, or we're documenting, that that is not the case. Those are all things that we have been saying and saying and saying, but we said it a while ago, and now you've heard something different. And I don't want you to lose sight of what, what has been said before and what has been documented as opposed to what you've heard recently. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Okay, council comments. Any council comments?
Mr. Hastings, go.
Mr. Hastings.
I would say quickly, first of all, the, thanks, thank you for the speakers, Cynthia, Monica, Ludell, and Carol, others. Just regarding those topics there, I just want to overemphasize how important it is to have a, you know, we need to have a county water and sewer plan in place, and we need to have it done 10 years ago. And then also when it comes to the, you know, to keeping things separate when it comes to, you know, whether that be DAF tanks in the future or industrial uses of sorts, you know, within, with our three high schools, or pardon, with our four high schools, main high schools in Wycomico County, three of which are within a quarter mile of an agricultural field. You know, there, there could easily be a DAF tank kind of situation or something like that in the future that would have been put next to, and, you know, next to a, a very important, you know, a school or something along those lines. I just want to overemphasize how important it is for the, on the planning side that we need to prepare for a future, but also recognize things as they are. We don't, we don't need to be, we don't need to go out of our way to prevent certain things from coming into county, but we need to appropriately make sure that they are put in the right location. And just historically, Wycomico County has done an abysmal job at planning. And, and, and I don't mean that as a knock against our planning community, but, and we've got some good folks that are in there now, and God bless them, but we have just historically, over the last 30 years or more, have done a terrible job at this. So I think we need to be much, much more proactive in the future, and especially towards, you know, we've, as it was brought up, we have so many failing septic systems from residential communities across, you know, across Wycomico. And we are at that 30-year mark for so many of them. And water tables are rising, as we all know, and especially as you get heavy rains like we did last night, you know. So I'll just leave it at that. But I just say it's so important for us to address it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more council comments? Mr. McCain.
Maybe I should have gone first. A lot of my comments were actually just mentioned by Councilman Hastings, but, you know, I do want to thank everyone for their comments. And regarding the issue of public sewer in our county, and Ludell, you know, we've all been in the real estate business now for, over 30 years. And I've been dealing with this for over 20 years. I think I've been on three different task forces now about this exact issue. And, and as you said, Josh, you know, we're, we're 20 years behind on this. So, you know, we, we just can't expedite this enough. And Ludell, I know you've attended, I think, my seminar a few times that I do annually. I know Colin, you attend that. And, you know, we've been talking about this for 15 years, about failing septic systems, you know, and how this needs to be dealt with. So, so it is on the radar, you know. And I think along that line, one thing I'd like to suggest, and this was a comment I was going to make, is maybe, maybe we even could do this in our next work session since we're getting ready to begin a new, basically a new fiscal year. But it might be a good idea for us to have a brief work session just to set our goals as a council for this upcoming, you know, year.
Agreed.
You know, I mean, we're, we're, the good thing is these things are on our table, you know, public sewer, DAF, solar. We've had work sessions in the past on these issues. But, you know, I think it'd be good for us just to, you know, I think, take a little time, maybe in our next meeting, just have a work session, say, "Here's our, here's our goals that we would like to see accomplished over this next year." And, you know, I think that could be productive.
I agree with you, Mr. McCain.
And on a totally different note, I want to offer congratulations to the Salisbury University baseball team, winning a national championship. I mean, that is a phenomenal feat. I mean, I think winning a baseball national championship is so challenging because for one thing, there's so many teams. And if you're a baseball person, you also know you can run, along the way, you can certainly run into, you know, an outstanding pitcher or something. You're so, it's so easy to get beat in baseball. You know, it's hard to, but it's so hard to win a national championship, you know. And to have the run that they had is pretty phenomenal. And so congratulations to them.
Thank you. Ms. Ackley.
I'm having a town hall meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Cedar Hill Park. I have some residents who would like to discuss the proposal of the West Metro Corps being converted to Conley Mill. Everyone is welcome, and I hope to see you all there.
Right. Thank you. Any more council comments? Mr. Hastings, again.
I just want to add on real quick to you that my old Mardella teacher, Ron Sires, was a part of this team, the Salisbury University, that won the national championship. And I'm quite proud of him as Mardella people.
He's not old, is he?
No.
I'm going to let him know you said that. I actually reached out to him to get Troy Brohan's phone number, and I was going to invite them to this meeting. But he didn't call back. They'd been very busy. But I, at the last meeting, I asked for everyone to give them their support because they were on the road to the national championship. And I've been doing a lot of digging in this. And the team that they played and beat literally kicked out of their division because they were too dominant. So now they're going from D3 to D1. So Salisbury University literally beat a D1 team. Why they were so dominant, I have no idea. But we should be proud of our university that has good ballplayers and a good team. And I forgot how many times that they've made it to the, to the finals, but they never won the championship until now. And on a side note, Salisbury University is the only team in Maryland that has won a national championship, so that's something to be proud of. So I also want to give congratulations to Parkside Baseball. They won their quarterfinal, or their regional championship on Friday, I believe it was. They played at Henry Parker Complex, and they're playing in the Maryland 2A quarterfinal game today, so let's support them. I want to congratulate all of our high schools for their graduation, the class of 2021. Ms. Ackley has a daughter that just graduated, so good luck to everyone. And Ms. Hurley asked me to remind the public that we have a charter review committee meeting on, is it Thursday? June 17th at 5:00 PM in the council chamber. So if you're interested, you're more than welcome to attend. Do we have any more council comments? All right, moving on. Need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions article, section 3 dash 305 B1, to discuss the personnel, a personnel matter pertaining to independent legal counsel to protect the confidentiality of the individual. I need a motion.
It's approved.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. Going to move into an open work session. Now, we're going to have environmental health operations and program successes by Ms. Lori Brewster, the local health officer, and Mr., is it Donado Williams, the acting director of environmental health?
Let's go Dan.
Dan? I'll go with Dan. Remember that, Ms. Hurley. Good morning.
Good morning. I will turn this over to Dan. But I will say that Dan came to us about a year and a half ago, retired from Calvert County, and has been working with us in a contractual role since he came. And he had been a director of environmental health in Calvert County before, as well as higher-level positions in the Health Department in Calvert County. We are very fortunate to have him, so I will turn it over to him.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't know exactly what you folks wanted to talk about, except failing septic systems. I understand that.
Yes.
But I thought it might be good to start out with our Division of Environmental Health and how it's set up. We're actually composed of two programs. We have our Environmental Protection Program, which is where our land activities occur. And we have one supervisor, two environmental health specialists. And I'm happy to announce, we just got a trainee. So we just got a trainee three weeks ago, and he's a graduate of the University of Salisbury. We also have our Community Protection Program. That's the other side of our shop. We have one supervisor and three environmental health specialists over there. The, these folks take care of our food facilities, our pools, mobile home parks, campgrounds, beaches, and they do our rabies prevention control program. So we have another whole side of our shop that we have. We actually have 582 restaurant facilities in the county that we're responsible for, and they have to be inspected at least twice a year. 55 pools, we have 21 mobile home parks, we have 31 campgrounds, three beaches, and we have animal bites every day. In fact, we're on call 24/7/365. We stand on call for rabies prevention and other environmental problems. We do nuisance investigations on that side of the shop also. On our Environmental Protection Program side, of course, we handle septic systems, new construction, we handle repairs, we handle the INAs. And the wells, we do new agricultural and replacement wells. So those, those are the various activities that we do handle. In the year 2020, we issued 371 permits. We received 419. In 2021, from January to current, we have received 290 applications, and we've issued 151. So we are trying to put the work out the best we can. We're severely limited, of course, by staffing. We also had a tremendous setback with, you know, the pandemic and all those things that went with it. Right now, I looked at some numbers this morning, and we're averaging about four to five weeks before we can actually touch the permit to begin the process. And depending on the type of permit we, we deal with, it takes time. Ms. Ludell had mentioned she'd been working. I took a lot of, I took a lot of notes, ma'am. And I'm embarrassed. I don't know Timberlake, but I will this afternoon. By the end of the day, I will know all about it. We do have some permits that will take a long time for various reasons, particularly on our older, smaller lots. Not being from here, I had to get a really quick education on flat ground. You folks are fairly flat over here. And a lot of clay. We have a lot of clay soils. And we also have sands. We have a lot of clay soils. And in areas where we have a lot of the smaller lots, we seem to have more of our, our impervious soils that we have to work with. And sand mounds are not unusual replacements. I'll be the first one to tell you, they take up a lot of space. I'll tell you, they, they do cost more money. And, but it is the, it is the alternative that we have available. The system that Ms. Ludell was speaking about is, we have, actually, we have 12 different types of systems that we can work with in the field of sand mounds. Some of them require bats, some of them do not bat. Bat is not a make of a system. Bat is a term we use for best available technology. And best available technology is that process where we can reduce nitrogen in, in the affluent that goes into whatever we, we're putting it into, a trench, a sand mound, et cetera. And the, the bat systems, we have three different types of bats that we use in addition to the other sand mound-type systems. The reason sometimes these can take time to get into the ground, and I'm going to be honest with you, we've had some that take, we've been working with them for three months to try to get them in, is because of, they work outside the normal regulations, outside COMER 2604. And we have to get special permission from the Maryland Department of the Environment to be able to do that. It requires their review. So they do a review, we do, we do the review, they do the review, and then we are able to get these in. And that's only after the engineers have designed the system. There, some of them are extremely high-tech. They have a lot of computer-controlled devices in them. It's not like the old days. I started doing septic systems in 1974, so okay, now I'm dating myself.
Yes.
And back then, we used to dig a hole, put some rock in it, put a pipe, flush a toilet. It was good. We've changed. We now have a computer-controlled dosing. We have alternating systems. It, it has really, really developed. And so this is why sometimes this can, can hold us up. We do process the ones that are simpler, faster. I myself am in the field. I'm only in, I always sit at that desk. I think the, the health officer liked me to sit more at the desk, but I can always sit in there a few hours, a couple of hours a day. I run, I run backhoe tests, and that's what I like to do and need to do to help out. And so in doing the backhoe tests, those are usually our deeper systems. Those are the ones we try to go down eight, nine, 10 feet and look for sand so we can backfill, you know, with gravel and so forth. There's a lot to it. It's complicated, but we're moving as quickly as we can. We actually, I'm happy to report that we actually have recruitment going on right now. We are recruiting for two environmental health aides. Environmental health aides will actually assist the sanitarians and provide some relief into what they're doing. That will help us tremendously. They only require a high school degree, and it comes with full state benefits. We are recruiting for another environmental trainee. The minimum time for an environmental trainee to be licensed is one year, minimum. Two years if they don't, if they can't meet the requirements of the licensing. And then they, no matter if it's one year or two years, there is a testing that has, has to be completed for licensing, and it's quite involved. It's not, it's not easy to get a license to practice environmental health in Maryland. But I am happy to report that we do have three positions right now that we're trying to recruit. The last one that we recruited and was able to hire took us a year and three months to, to recruit and hire that position. So that tells you where we are. You know, we'll do the You know, we'll do the best we can, but that's where we are with it. And I know we have 1,000 questions.
Mr. Davis?
Maybe I'm missing something here. The secretary was sitting here a couple of months back, and he said the ultimate decision, the final decision is left with the department locally, and you're saying that these systems have to be approved back up to MDE before they can go underground?
The INA, INA stands for innovative and alternative technology. In other words, those systems that are not exactly within the regulations, the ones that are not within the confines of the regs have to be approved by Maryland Department of the Environment. That is correct, sir, they do.
So what Mrs. Ludell is proposing, that has to go back up to MDE to be approved?
That is under MDE review, I assume. I don't, like I said, I just-
And it takes six months?
It can take, it can take us, yeah, it can take us up to six months.
Okay, and in the same point, we get, we had contractors in here and say they can go in the neighboring counties and get them approved in no time. So why is Wycomico such a hard place to get septic systems renewed?
I will only share with you, sir, that I am now in the network of environmental health directors for the state of Maryland, and this comes up every meeting, the delay times for the Maryland Department of the Environment's reviews. They're just busy, they've got a lot going on. So it's the only way I can answer-
So they put Wycomico on the back burner? Because we're getting from-
Well, not now or not, because I've been bugging the living daylights out of them.
Yeah, because we're getting, we're saying that contractors, we had some in here to say Wycomico, in Somerset and Worcester, they have no problem getting systems approved, but it's always Wycomico that they've had a lot of problems.
I would like to speak to that as well. If you recall, in 2018, MDE did an audit of the work that had been done in 2016 under our previous administration. During that time, they found significant issues with the way the work was done. So they have been, they were in our office for over a year, working with staff and reviewing every piece of work that occurred in Wycomico County. So we are under a little more scrutiny by Maryland Department of the Environment related to the work that had been previously done.
We go over every permit application with a fine-tooth comb, we make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. In other words, what I'm saying, sir, is we're doing it by the book.
And we recognize, go ahead, Bill.
Well, sorry.
Ms. McCain?
Yeah, Dan over here, sorry about that. Thanks for being with us today, and you know-
My pleasure.
Yep, and we understand the sort of overrun of the department sometimes when it comes to, especially when an active real estate market like we have right now, so we know that's very challenging when you combine that with the whole issue with replacement systems. And you kind of hit the nail on the head earlier, and this is something I had shared with Secretary Grumbles when he was here, when you talked about our soil compositions, you know, we're primarily, you know, clay, and obviously, I mean, clay does perk, it perks slower, it just takes longer. But, and I know we often get septic providers, and I've run into this numerous occasions where they've said, you know, "I can put you in a system that will work perfectly fine", but it's not, we can't, the parameters we have to do it within don't work. You know, and I hear that time and time again, and maybe we need to get Secretary Grumbles back in here, because my big thing has always been, changes have to be made, and more flexibility in the science of it, to give us some, so many times, well, I know we're coming back with the mound systems, and I've experienced this personally with properties of them, I mean, we're right on the verge of, you know, are we going to need the mound, not need the mound? And it all depends on just what day, you know, they might be there checking the, you know, the flow rates and so forth, you know, I mean, it's always, it's, if we just had more flexibility, more alternatives, more, and the septic people, and like I say, time and time again, say, you know, it exists, but they're, they got to fit in the box. So I know, I know that's kind of a lot of moving parts there I'm throwing at you, but you know, what do we need to do? Like I said, I just, let's get Secretary Grumbles back here if we have to, because nothing's been, I'm not seeing anything has been changed. You know, I mean, I know you are working hard, and you're trying to make the changes within the office to get, to keep up and so forth, but until that science changes, you know, and you mentioned the mound systems, you know, which are becoming so prevalent, and yes, you know, they, that's the, they take up a lot of space, they're the only alternative that works, they're costly, but then the big thing is, you know, from a real estate perspective, that's the last thing you want, that's the last thing you want stuck in your front yards, an 85 or 100-foot, four or five-foot mound system. You know, good luck, you know, next time you go to sell your property, you know, and that's a total sunk cost. You know, it might cost you $30,000, but your property didn't, value didn't change, but that's just simply a cost. And so it's a, it's a problem. You know, we're going to have entire subdivisions in our county over these next four to five years, getting back to Ludell's point about, you know, most of our building took place, you know, our peak building was 80s and 90s. You know, here's one thing I guarantee you, every one of those drain fields, they will fail. You know, that's just a fact, and, you know, but we got entire subdivisions that, one by one, are just getting replaced with mound system, mound system, mound system, and you know, it's a problem.
And I agree with you, it is.
Thank you.
We also, as a last resort, will put in holding tanks, and no one wants to talk about holding tanks, but we are doing more and more holding tanks, excuse me, this year, since, yeah, since January of this year, I know that we've done five holding tank agreements, and those are used when every option has been exhausted. We dug every piece of dirt, we've measured everything we can, we've considered moving wells, and we do move wells on properties. We don't, but we have to have wells moved in order to get separations. And when all else fails, we will actually have to go to the holding tank system, and that's, you know, that's our worst alternative. And you're talking to a guy that spent 17 years as a utilities director. I ran water and sewer systems. I love public sewer, I love public water. Sorry, guys.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes, thanks for being here.
Oh, my pleasure, sir.
We're looking forward very much to see the work that you'll be doing for us.
We'll try.
And, you know, we're fully aware of the fact of the state coming in and sort of interceding and causing a lot of, in my opinion, complications. This is part of what we share with Secretary Grumbles. We've talked to Secretary Grumbles, we've also met with Assistant Secretary Dorsey, and my impression from speaking with both of them is that they very much want to see Wycomico County getting out of this quandary. They want to see, and to the most part, almost encourage more local autonomy as far as addressing our own issues. The thing that we have, regardless of soils or the state interference or anything such to that effect, what I've witnessed, I know other council members have witnessed, is for the most part, 15 years of inconsistencies. This was literally an issue when, I know Bill and I and Joe and Larry, when we first got into office in 2006. There were some variables, some years better than others, but I'd say right now, we've fallen right back to where we probably were in 2006. And a lot of that is a matter of efficiencies, whether it's turnaround time, whether it's staffing, staffing shortages, whether it's returning the calls. The public in general really has the impression that the environment health department just simply has trouble coming to conclusions as to how to resolve the issues. The delays might not necessarily be because of lack of staff, as it is staff being completely unsure of what the solution is. So that's part of what we're looking for here, is trying to put this to rest. Wycomico County, for the most part, I would guess is probably the one county that's very unique in having this terrible problem. I don't hear this in Dorchester, I don't hear it about in Worcester. We know it's not happening in Sussex. Sussex has a completely different set of dynamics. But I would, I would feel that Wycomico County may be probably the, out of the, all the counties in the state of Maryland, we probably have a really serious issue here. I've said many times before, I have developer friends of mine who refuse to build in Wycomico County, literally, and have done it before and said, "We're not going to do this anymore." They'll go to Worcester, they'll go to Sussex, and we certainly don't want to see that. So I guess my thing to you is what we can do maybe to make sure we have greater oversight locally and how we can get that in control.
I could only share with you that since I've been in the desk, we will make decisions, you know, unless regulations prevent us from doing other things, but we will make decisions. We are, we're trying to be as consistent as possible. As I said, every application's being scrutinized closely, we're doing everything the same way. We have put out some, we took that website, and we've changed a lot of stuff. We've got frequently asked questions out there now. We have, I'm getting, I'm trying to develop right now a water table graph that allows the public to go in in almost real time to see where the water data is, how it's rising and falling, because that affects on some of the septic systems that we work with. We're almost there. And so, and if there's anything else that you folks think that we should put out there, please let us know. You know, anything we can do to improve, you know, communication, relationships, that, you know, I'm all about that. We're in this together.
Yeah, I agree. How much would you say that the staff from the university, and I know that the health department's very unusual, everybody thinks it's Wycomico employees because it's Wycomico Health Department, but it isn't, but how many of administrative staff are there currently from the state of Maryland who are in, working within the Wycomico County Health Department? How much is the state of Maryland overseeing what we're doing that could possibly be reasons for delays? That's what I'm getting at.
So if it is an innovative and alternative system, they have to be involved, which can delay the process, as Dan said. They also are in the department or reviewing work in the department every couple of weeks. But that is consistent with what is occurring in other jurisdictions. They have regional people that go into the health departments if the environmental health division is in the health department, which most of them are, and they review the work. We are currently also working with Maryland Department of the Environment to do an audit, again, of some work from 2016. I have asked numerous times for them to review the work that was done post-2018, and I have not gotten that yet. They are still reviewing work from the last audit. So I wanted them to review work that was done after they were involved, so that we could bring that to you all to show you whether or not there have been improvements in the work that we're doing, and I have not received that yet. I was told that that would be coming, but they were working on this other audit first.
Mr. Holloway?
Good morning. Thanks for being here, and I understand it's been a breath of fresh air. Since you arrived in the office, there's a lot more things getting done.
Thank you very much.
And believe me, in the past, and this is no disrespect to Ms. Brewster, there's been some issues, you know, and Ms. Brewster oversees the entire department, so she's, a lot of it she hasn't known about or seen, or she, some of it she has heard about, I'm sure, from me in particular. But anyway, what Bill said a while ago about some of the installers saying, "I can do this, and I can make it work," do you rely on what some of these installers tell you they can do as far as making it work? I mean, I've had installers saying, "Look, I told them this will work," but they just said flat out, "No, this is not the way it's going to be." There's a lot of animosity between some of these installers and some of the inspectors out here, or I guess you call them inspectors, people that help design these systems, when the guys with the boots on the ground actually know what works and what doesn't work. So do you rely with it on these guys, any? Do you, do you take their advice? Is your staff instructed to pay attention to what they say?
I do. When I'm out on the site, particularly repairs, new constructions and those are a little different, but on repairs, there's been times when I've met with the contractors on the site, and honestly, we have some very good contractors in the county, and I've met with them, and we'll both sit there and scratch our heads and say, "Okay, what are we going to do? How's it going to work?" And we'll put together an engineering plan, and they'll say, "Well, you know, we can bend it a little bit this way." And in fact, we're working on right now, one right now where we've relied on the contractor heavily to help us design and lay it out. And so, yes, we do take their expertise where we can. Once again, staying inside the regulations, but we do, we do take their expertise and use it. And I've been pushing that to the, to our EHSs.
Okay, I, another matter that I've mentioned before, I read an article a while back, and this goes back to the science of this, about them separating the gray water to try to alleviate the nitrates, is it nitrates, nitrogen that's going into the systems? You know, having systems that separate the gray water, in other words, sinkwater, dishwater.
Right.
Is there anything in the works as far as that technology being used yet?
In the state of Maryland, not that I'm aware of. I know other states, like in Florida, they do separate gray waters, and they use it as irrigation water, like on golf courses and things like that. In Maryland, so far, I know of no program. It would be great to entertain it.
Well, I guess the question is, why hasn't it been entertained? Because it would take so much off of these systems, and then probably would make the system simpler, is, who would you go to to have that?
Apparently, you've already talked to Secretary Grumbles, and he might be the gentleman to speak with.
Right. Okay.
All right. Ms. Ackley?
Yes, thank you for coming in. Sounds like you're in the hot seat today. I just had a statement, a question, Ms. Brewster, when you said about the 2016, the errors that they found, if there was any type of corrective action plan for those, for those inconsistencies that were found. And then on the Critical Bay Area Commission, we do hear these very similar descriptions of what you shared with us, I mean, they're throughout the state. One of the things that I've seen in other counties is what is presented to the resident is, "We are approving you for a mound system. If you do not choose to do that, then it's up to the individual homeowner then to pursue a different avenue," which could take up to a year. And I don't, I don't know if that message is consistent throughout the county or throughout the state, I've just heard it in other counties. And then I also, I wanted to ask if you would be willing to come to more work sessions, whether it's twice a year, three times a year, quarterly, just to, so we can keep this communication going, it's not shut down, and we can have a plan moving forward. Ms. Brewster shaking her head, but I don't know what you mean.
If the health officer will let me out. So, yes, I'd be more than happy to come over, anytime. I believe in communication, it's the easiest way to head off a problem. If there's an issue, let's, you know, let's see if we can figure it out and fix it.
And I think on the communication component, it would be helpful to also have the MDE arm present as well during some of those work sessions, so that there is accurate communication from both sides, so that you're not communicating with one and then communicating with the other arm of the department. And on your 2016 corrective action, yes, there was a corrective action plan, and that's why MDE was involved in all of the permitting that occurred within the department. They did extensive training of staff. I think Dan was even part of that for a brief period of time. So that corrective action plan did take place, and that's why I want an audit done of the work done pri, after they- of the work done pri, after they left the department and we were functioning on our own.
Was that corrective action plan, was that made public to?
The audit was made public, the corrective action plan. I'd have to go back and ask MDE if they actually have that documented, because they worked with us on that, but the audit was public. It listed a series of properties that were of concern, the way the work was, was conducted, and that's why they did extensive training with all the staff.
Mr. Hastings?
Actually, Dan, first of all, I'm glad to have you here. I love your energy, and it's good to have somebody in this spot. Hopefully, we can have three more of you, or anything that we can do, I guess, on the, our side to help advocate through the state for more funding or anything like that, or, you know, I'd, I'd love to have a go-ahead from our own locals to say, "Hey, go, go make sure that you, you all can speak to see if we can add more staffing." A couple of years ago, Department of, there was a couple of folks, a couple of organizations basically put together in their legislative priorities at the state level, and of them, which was, there was a study that basically Department of Environment, Department of, Maryland Department of Agriculture, DNR, were all underfunded by 30% compared to where they were before. This is, of course, continuing in the understanding that we want small government. Small government doesn't always give you efficiency. I get it. But nonetheless, we need people, we need bodies to be able to be a part of this, and then we need transparency. So, we have to be at that adequate level regardless. The other thing that just, just so it's said, because it's, it's always hard to hear this, you know, our, our system right now for putting trash in the ground is literally digging a hole and stick it in the, you know, that's what we do when we have our landfill. Septic systems are just as archaic, and I think that's, I think that's important to note, because, you know, if, if anyone has a, if you, if you were on a septic system and you have a neighbor within an eighth of a mile of you, most likely, you are getting the chemicals from whatever that individual, you know, whether prescription medications or other kind of things. This is a larger issue, and this is why I'm bringing it up. Wycomico County, we need to, and across the shore, or across the United States, we need to move away from this technology. You will never, ever have a not polluting septic system. You will never have a not failing septic system. It's just a matter of time. And so, the idea of how we go about that has to change, and how we, we continue to this day to approve it, and that's great. That was helpful when we had folks who lived on farms, and that's what they did. But we have an entire subdivisions who are, you know, putting chemicals, they're essentially going into the ground, or putting their own, you know, we don't use ultraviolet light to kill off any chemicals or break down the, so I want to bring this up, because this is a larger conversation that all of us need to hear, because we are then being affected by the chemicals that our neighbors or, you know, and here in the Lower Shore, it's very, it's, we're very different from the BID Shore, the Upper Shore, or the rest of the state, because anything you put, anyone knows who's lived on the Eastern Shore, you can take a, you know, bottle of water and put it in the ground, it doesn't pool, it goes straight down, right? So, I bring all that up just because I think it's important, and, you know, if there's anything that we can continue to do, I guess, to help advocate for more staffing, that's important, but we also need to shift the model, and this is something that needs to be a team effort for all of us to, to not just planning, not just, you know, not just the county councils, we all have to advocate for changing for a better system. Otherwise, we're going to continue to keep steel, still dealing with the same issues 30, 50, 100 years from now. So, that's all.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes, Mrs. Insley mentioned different systems that are available. Are the installers and the homeowners made aware of these from the onset when, you know, when they know they have a problem, the sellers, I mean, are they, are they made aware that there are different alternatives?
The contractors are aware of the various systems that are out there. I'm not confident that the homeowners are, probably not, but I know, I know the installers are, and they know the different ones. And we have to also take into account that some of the systems will only work as INA systems, so we have to make sure we're matching the right system to the right application, you know, that sort of a thing.
Would it be helpful to have a brochure that would be, that the realtors could have and homeowners have?
Yeah, we can.
That would be?
Certainly do that, yeah. In fact, that's in publication right now through the Maryland Department of the Environment, but I can, we could certainly pull that link out and put it onto our website, something like that.
Okay.
Good. Any more questions or comments? Mr. Cannon?
Oh, yeah, I would say, yeah, part of the discussion, we have the Assistant Secretary involved, just that, how we could get a better message out. Whether we created a video that they could put online where they could say, "Okay, here's what you do, are you going to new development? Push here," and then it could explain the exact steps that were necessary, and giving, giving them an idea online of the timeframe that they should anticipate, anything to that effect, and brochures certainly could back that up. It'd be a matter of, I guess, finding the funding to put all this together. I know that, Ms. Brewster, you'd made some suggestions as well, which are very good. Question I also have, a lot of contractors have asked, what is the possibility of, of hiring private, or allowing for private inspectors, sort of privatizing that, privatizing this one area? How does that work out as far as state law, et cetera?
Let me answer that? So, our division is done under a delegation agreement from the Maryland Department of the Environment. The Maryland Department of the Environment determines who they give the delegation agreement to. If they took the delegation agreement from us, they would be the people that would be doing the work in Wycomico County until, or possibly, I will just say, until they make a decision as to who they would be willing to give the delegation agreement to, if anyone. They, I have discussed that with them, and they, they said that they're not, right now, thinking that they would give the delegation agreement to anyone, but that would have to be a discussion that, I guess, the council, as well as Dan and I with MDE, to have a, with the secretary and the assistant secretary. And I, if I may, I would like to talk about Mr. Hastings' comment about the funding for this work. Maryland Department of the Environment gives us $0 to pay for the work that is done in environmental health. The county funds 100% of our environmental health division in the health department. So, I think that there's that piece of knowledge that is beneficial. The piece that I think could be very helpful to us is perhaps, if you could, I'm putting an ask out there, we are considerably low in our salaries in environmental health, which makes it extremely difficult to attract individuals to come to work in the department. We, health officers, as well as the environmental health directors, have asked for an annual salary review, so that we could possibly get an increase in the salary for these positions, and it may be beneficial to have a letter from the county council to help us get an annual salary review, so that we could attract additional people, because you can go into the private sector and make a whole lot more money doing the same type of work.
That's, that is a great point. That's the first time I've heard exactly what role we play. It's a little bit hard to find that out from the budget, but I think the council, based on the, you know, the discussions that we've had over the years, would be, I think, more than willing to try to see where we couldn't, couldn't make that work. Now, this delegation agreement, that's sort of coming up for re-review now, isn't it?
The delegation agreement that I have right now is from 1985, I believe. They have been reviewing it since I've been the health officer, and that's been since 2007. I have asked for many years for an updated delegation agreement, and as the other health officers have too. Our other part of our environmental health program, the community health, is under a delegation agreement with the Maryland Department of Health, and we have an updated delegation agreement from them, but not from Maryland Department of the Environment.
Do any hybrid versions of that exist? I mean, it sounds like what you're saying with the delegation agreement, it's got to be one or the other, is, does any counties have a combination of the two?
I don't recall any having a hybrid. The only one that is really out of the ordinary is Worcester County. The county government operates the Environmental Protection Division of the environmental health program. That was done many, many, many years ago, but I think that's the only one.
All right. Mr. Holloway, last question. We're about 30 minutes behind.
Just a couple of things. I know folks probably watching this on PAC 14, and maybe some in the audience, don't understand where a lot of all this comes from. What's happening here is folks are selling their homes. They can sell their homes as is, but when they have a lender they have to deal with, the lender requires a home inspection, and they require a septic inspection. And what I hear from folks, because I go to some of these folks' home when they're selling and moving, is, "Hey, my septic system's been working fine all these years," and, you know, "Now, they've came in and said my septic system won't work." The health department comes along and says, "Well, you know, it's just you and your husband living here, and you might sell it to somebody with three kids, you know, there's going to be five people living here." And it's mainly the lenders that's pushing the issue a lot of times, not all the time. If we're not talking about failing systems now, we're talking about systems that have to be replaced due to a home sale. So, that's where that's, that's where that's happening. That's what's causing a lot of the business, because a lot of homes are selling right now. So, anyway, the other thing, the other question I have, you all designed these systems, right?
Sorry.
Correct? Do you guarantee them to work?
The short answer is the shorter answer. No.
Okay.
And the reason being is, we have no idea how this system's going to function. In other words, are you going to put the 10 folks in the house? Are you going to have the jacuzzi backwash running into the septic system? We went out on one the other day for a repair, the folks had actually taken their downspouts and had rerouted them into the septic tank. No.
No.
Not a good idea.
If the system, if the system's designed to do something, unless the people do go out there and run their downspouts, I find it a little hard, I would find it hard to take, if I went out and spent $30,000 on a system that the health department required me to have, and then if I use that system the way it was supposed to be used, and it didn't work, and that, that seems to be a problem, and that has been a problem in the past, so.
And that's why we are reviewing these with a fine-tooth comb, so that we don't have premature failures that we've had in the past.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brewster, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing you again at the next work sessions, and thanks very much. All right, next on the agenda is the zoning of certain large storage tanks. Ms. Lori Carter, Director of Planning and Zoning and Community Development, and Mr. Clark Meadows, Zoning Administrator.
Clark. Meadows is unable to be here today as a family situation, so I have his notes, so I'm, I'm Clark Meadows for.
Bring the mic.
We'll ask you all the questions, and how's that?
All right, go ahead and state your name, then, your position, and thank you for that, Mr. Wilbur.
I'm Lori Carter, I'm the Planning Director for Wycomico County.
And Paul Wilbur, County Attorney.
Clark Meadows.
I'm, yeah.
Right, with Clark's notes.
Excuse me.
Do you want me to keep going?
Okay. So, the issue was, we, we know the county's had, county council's had a moratorium on for, for at least, about a year, I think, now. And Clark has done some investigating about these open-top storage tanks and how to deal with them. And what I think he's focused on is the, the issue of notice to neighbors and the size of the tanks. And what he is suggesting, and that's what obviously we'd like to have a discussion about today, is to modify the zoning code, so that they will continue to be permitted uses in industrial 1 and industrial 2. And in agricultural and village conservation, that the, I'll just read what we have here, it's utilized for agricultural products, byproducts, fertilizers, and soil amendments. We know that's a key word in all this discussion. With a capacity exceeding 250,000 gallons, these would be required to have a special exception. So, that would require the notification to the neighbors and a hearing, and the Board of Appeals would be able to set conditions. So, that's the key, I think that's the key thought that he came up with from his investigations, that 250,000 gallon size for an open-top storage tank, above that, a special exception. A minimum setback of 200 feet from other property in all zoning districts, and a minimum lot size of five acres in any zoning district. Those were ideas, proposals that Clark is, asked me to present, so.
So, the current tank that we're having the issue with, what, 3 million gallons?
3 million.
It's 3 million, yes.
I guess my question, if Clark was here, would be, how did you come up with the 250,000? Where was the benchmark there?
Well, I think he's had discussions with the agricultural community, and that 250,000 number is derived from those discussions.
Which the 250,000 equates to 26,000, 26,855 bushels. So, when you're looking at a farming operations, it kind of meets that for them.
First of all, thank you. I, I like that. I like that a lot. I'm really glad to see him going to those measures, and Lori, you're assisting this as well, I know. Will there have been any stipulations as to how the product may or may not be used? Other words, would it have to be used on one soil, on, on that farmer's land, or could that product be sold somewhere else? Would that change the determination, as we're looking at now, as to whether it's industrial use or agricultural use?
Or into the commercial idea.
Yes.
Obviously, in an agricultural area, if you are conducting a commercial operation, that's going to be an issue.
That's an issue.
Right, because they've always said before that they just worry about the tank, and the structure of the tank is all zoning has to worry about, but the determination of how the product is used, sounds to me like will be coming into play now?
That is correct.
It will be? Okay. I, I like it. What about traffic restrictions? How will that come into play?
As far as traffic, again, if you look in your briefing book, it was included, the chapter 186, "We do not legislate or regulate traffic." So, that's some area that, you know, we would not be looking at per se.
Maybe we could do this in concert with whoever does regulate that, because if you approve something through zoning, the next thing you know, you know, you've got 300 trucks moving in and out, it would not be a good idea to approve it, right? So, how do you create that?
Well, I think that's where the special, you know, having it to come before the board will help with that, because that's going to be able to give these citizens an opportunity to be able to say, "These are some of those actual concerns."
And, and obviously, the smaller the tank, it should be less traffic in and out.
Correct.
Yep.
That's a good point, too. I just want to make sure that somehow we're modifying, or as a county, we're paying close attention to the ancillary impacts that could impact a community.
Definitely.
What stops you from building 10 tanks on the same property?
We just had a good question in the back. Any limit on tanks per acre, et cetera, et cetera? You said 5 acres.
I mean, but that's why we're here, to see if there's other things that you guys would want to see in this. So, again, those are some things that we can be able to note.
I think, I think that's definitely something that should be added, you know, or certainly that question, you know, of how many tanks. I mean, I think, getting back to John's comment, I mean, this is certainly in the right direction. I do want to circle back, though, to John's question about... I do want to circle back, though, to John's question about, you know, John, you'd asked the question about, you know, is how they're being used going to come into play? You know, I think that answer was yes, but why is that yes? I mean, I don't see
Well, I mean, if you're looking at the act, well, if you're looking at, if it's, and again, I'm not Clark, so I wanted to make sure I, I preference that. But again, if you're looking at the activity per se, then basically, if it's ag-related, then of course it wouldn't. But then again, if you're looking at it from a standpoint, I'm trying to think of a good example here.
Well, I think DAF itself is kind of a good example. I mean, that was a big issue, you know, is it quote industrial or agricultural, you know, so that's what went in those tanks is obviously the, a major issue here.
Yeah.
You know, and I know, and the size issue here is one way to quote address that, you know, but, but nothing else, just maybe that's a comment just to get back with
Yeah, I will talk to him about that, but I think that, you know, we will look at the fact in regards to, as the use, again, what is the use? How is it being used? Making sure that it follows through with the regulations as it is stated as far as ag use. So the, the actual activity.
Right.
Ms. Holloway? Does, does it state in there about open top tanks? Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's the focus to put, try to put it open.
I guess, you don't, you don't put corn in an open top tank. You don't put gasoline in an open top tank.
Right.
What's, what's the purpose of having to have an open top tank for the sludge? Does it help it do what it's supposed to do, go through with the heat or whatever?
Breathe or whatever.
It's anaerobic digestion.
Because if not, it will
Okay.
Call something
But that could be done, that could be done with fans or pumps, I would suppose, too. I'm just wondering if that, in the wide scheme of things, if that wouldn't help alleviate some of the issues we've had with this one. I mean, they, they ventilate corn and soybeans with fans and pumps, you know, to dry them. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. I didn't know if there was a real reason why they have, you know, open top or not.
I think, what I gather from Clark is closed top tanks have not been an issue. They've, they've dealt with whatever issues are generated by the product that are in the tank, where we have an open top tank here, where obviously the smell of this one or any other one is an issue.
So the way this, the way this is written up, as it is, they could put a closed top tank in at 3 million gallons without going to a special exception, right?
That would be the concept.
And ventilate it with fans and cause just as much problems.
Conceivably, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It's like, we're not engineers, so we don't know what could be done to deal with it, you know?
Hastings?
Is the issue that there's basically just, there's not been a court ruling to say that this particular product, in this case, DAF, is not a, the difference between an agricultural product and a commercial product or a waste, right? We just don't have that, we don't have anything to point to, so at this point in time, we have to assume that whatever the, that it has an agricultural use, that's what we're going for, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Carter, I just
Exactly.
Oh, sorry. Just one thing to, for you to consider, if you would, when coming up with these recommendations, is looking at the process for appeals. If citizens are not in agreement with the decision that's made from the Planning and Zoning Board, what the process and how they will be notified of the process to appeal it. Is that going to stay the same? Do you think that that's something we need to look at? I know it's currently 30 days, but if citizens don't know what the process is, how do they know?
Of course, the process, time limits are in a code.
Okay.
And the appeal from the Board of Appeals on a special exception is to the circuit court.
So I looked on our website, and I could not find the process and the timeline of how to appeal something.
I'll see if I can provide you with some.
I just like to make that public knowledge, so that if someone wants to do it, they'll know how to. And then the other comment is if, do you think it would be, and I think it's great that Mr. Meadows was able to go out and to speak to some of the citizens, but possibly putting together a task force or a work group. I know Mr. McCain said he was on a work group at one point for septic, but is this something we need town halls to get input, or do we need a, to put together an advisory committee?
Are you speaking in regards to the, what's being proposed?
Yes. That's just a question, if you think that's, that's necessary.
I would say the sensitivity there is, the moratorium has gone on quite a while.
Okay.
I mean, the process now would be if the council, if, we can come back, you know?
We need to speed it up?
Yeah.
For that purpose.
Because we've got to go through the Planning Commission with a piece of legislation and then bring it back to the council. So obviously, there's time in that. How much more time do we want to spend? But we want to incorporate your suggestions, too.
Is 200 foot's not a very long distance?
Yeah.
From a property line.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, 200 foot setback, I mean, that's, that's not a
I think he looked at the CAFO.
Pardon me?
I think he looked at the CAFO.
Yeah, but this, this presents a little more, and
Do you have a suggestion?
Issue.
More open to suggestions?
We're out there, you know, I mean, it'd be 400, could it be 600? You know, I mean, that's, that's something I guess we have to decide, but I just
That's what we're here for.
I think 200, 200 is a little short.
Yeah, I think I agree with that, but I don't know what to recommend, so maybe we should look into it, because it's difficult to compare CAFO to a DAF tank. Two different products.
For our Charter Review Committee, we have, there's a board where citizens can post comments or questions to look at. I don't know if it would be something that you could do to have an open, I'm not even sure, Laura, how that forum works for citizens to post.
Yeah, so I worked with IT in just developing a online comment section for the Charter Review Committee where citizens can, you know, just submit their comments right online.
So are those comments that would be aiding in the process, or there was just comments?
Just general comments.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilbur, I'm assuming this will be a legislative bill?
Yes, definitely. It would be a zoning code amendment.
So there would be a public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the County Council?
Yes.
So there would be
Correct.
Two separate public hearings?
Right.
There'll be, yeah. Opportunity.
And I'm getting the feeling that we're nowhere close to even moving ahead with a legislative bill, if we've got a lot of questions.
I don't know, I think he's doing pretty well. He's given us a lot to work with. Other question I have is, in, in relation to what was discussed earlier as far as off-season uses of the current DAF tank, who monitors that as far as the county is concerned, the state is concerned? How is that? If, if, you know, they're pulling from this tank during months that they are not supposed to be, or putting it into the soil, who is supervising overseeing that?
Good question. I'm not for sure that I know that answer, but we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know, to put it throughout, I mean, someone has a problem with that, they'd like to know where to report it.
And, and I had the same question the last time we met, and Mr. Meadows was here. Who monitors this once they come in and put in an application for a permit? Who goes out to the site and monitors it to see if they're continuing with the same process?
When you have a special exception, I know, Paul, you've probably been through it, and I've heard, had issues with it before. When you have a special exception, it's basically on a complaint basis, if a neighbor complains and then the Board of Zoning appeals, you know, has the folks come in and explain why they've exceeded their special exception, or they're not following their special exception.
Right.
Of course, this wasn't under a special exception, so.
No.
No. Mr. Hastings?
I was just thinking, is there ways that we can get creative with it? First of all, I love the idea of public comment. The more that we can get public to submit their own understanding to us, that we can put it together and speed up the process, that's great. But in general, I love, I love the idea of having more comment on everything from this to solar siting and others, et cetera. But I guess the question in my mind, is there, is there ways that we can get creative with how, how the code is, you know, a particular tank of a certain size couldn't go within, you know, if there are X amount of residential homes within X amount of space? So is there anything like that? I'm sure that's probably not a part of our current code of any kind of sort, but maybe. But what I'm getting at is, I think where the future is going is probably not with open DAF tanks. It's probably going to be more with these, you know, the, you know, the aerobic digesters, you know, filling up these giant bags, you know, essentially, and what Purdue is doing in their Seaford plan. I think that's probably going to, that seems to be where things are going in the future. What we don't want to do is continue to see a future where a commercial industrial waste is essentially then run across rural roads and then put into a space where there's not the aerial to, to adequately manage it if something were to go wrong, or if, or even if it goes right. We don't want to, we want to limit the traffic or those kind of things. So the real issue is that we're putting something that is a potential problem in a space that is rural and not able to handle the traffic, the, the other kind of concerns that goes along with that. So I don't know if there's a way to further limit it by the size of, you know, you know, within a certain amount of space, the amount of residential homes or something like that. That's just, I'm trying to think creatively.
Any more questions or comments? Ms. Harley?
So Lori, you mentioned that in the industrial one and industrial two zoning, it would still continue to be permitted the way it currently is.
Yes.
Regardless of
Regardless of size.
Okay. And then if it's in a ag district or the village conservation, it would require the special exception.
That is correct.
Can you explain that process for the public's benefit, exactly what that process is?
When it's, when an application actually comes in?
Right, the time the application is submitted to the time it's approved.
Well, from the time that an application walks in the door, it's reviewed by the zoning administrator. He goes through, depending upon the actual process of that, he may have to talk to other Typically, if an application comes in the door, it could be scheduled for the next following meeting, depending upon the time of advertising.
Scheduled where?
It would be scheduled in the news, it's scheduled in the Daily Times.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's how it's normally done. But also, the property is posted as well. Okay, so there is a sign that goes out that says that, you know, whatever, that might be actually scheduled. And then from that time, you know, when the staff report is actually put together, if a citizen has a concern, they can actually request a copy of that. And then once the public hearing is actually scheduled, then if they wish, if they would like to attend, then they are able to attend. So from that particular time, it's posted, and again, if anybody has any type of concerns, they're more than welcome to contact the department.
Does the board normally vote at the same time as the public hearing, or would they normally?
It all depends. The majority of time, it does. But there may be some times where, depending, just like with you guys here, you may have to table something. But the majority of time, yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Okay. The question I would have is, what, what do you see as our path forward here? Do we want to come back to the council after Clark looks at it some more, take something to the Planning Commission?
I think it would be best to come back for another work session.
Okay.
Could you, could you come back with the draft of the bill?
Sure. Yeah.
Great.
And with the draft, you're looking at some of the suggestions that you've made here today, am I correct?
Right, the draft, taking two considerations.
Things we've talked
Yeah. Our discussion.
I just want to say thank you, by the way. This is really, this is really helpful, and this is, I think, what a lot of folks wanted, a lot of constituents have wanted, so thank you for taking the time to do that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the relocation of a forest conservation easement located on lots 7 and 8, Westbrook Drive, which Westbrook Medical Center, G2 Properties LLC. Mr. Tyler Walston from the Department of Planning and Zoning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, as we just mentioned, we have an application for a forest conservation easement relocation. The applicant is Parkin Associates on behalf of G2 Properties LLC. The location of the property is on Woodbrook Drive. It's on 7.32 acres. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting permission to relocate a portion of the forest conservation easement that is located on the property. Currently, the site is an area of 2.86 acres and an FCA easement. The applicant requests that .47 acres of the easement be removed. Since the relocation is proposed to occur off-site, the owner must relocate the easement at a 2:1 ratio. And that, that figure would be .94 acres. At this time, staff recommends approval of the project since it meets all requirements.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, no questions or comments, then this will have to go to a public hearing, which can be held on July 14th at the same time as today, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tyler.
All right, next we have an update on broadband by Mr. John Monarch, Director of Information Technology. And Mr. John Posoda.
John Posoda, Acting County Executive. Good morning.
Good morning, this afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. John Monarch, Director of Information Technology. Thanks for having me here today to give you an update on broadband in the county. The county continues to maintain, encourage, an open line of communication with broadband internet service providers, or ISPs, and all the major players in our region, collecting and providing up-to-date information. The goal of these efforts is to assist ISPs in identifying potential expansion projects within the county that reach the most populated unserved areas. Broadband, as defined by the FCC, as internet service with at least 25 megabit download and 3 megabit upload speeds, has existed in Wycomico County for the past 20 years. Over the past two years, there have been three major middle-mile broadband expansion projects funded by the state of Maryland and constructed by Maryland Broadband Cooperative. Maryland Broadband Cooperative is a nonprofit organization, supported by its members, that constructs open access fiber optic networks in rural communities so that its members can provide last mile internet service to potential customers. These three middle-mile fiber optic projects allow for ISPs to reach unserved areas in Hebron, Quantico, and Tiasken. As previously, previously discussed in our last meeting, in the first round of funding, the FCC awarded Talky Communications, who is a private ISP out of Chestertown, Maryland, over $50 million to build fiber optic broadband networks throughout the state of Maryland in unserved areas. In Wycomico County specifically, there are more than 80 designated broadband internet service build-outs to unserved census block areas as part of this grant. It is our understanding that the timeline to complete, complete these build-outs is around six to eight years. At some point, there will be a second round of funding released by the FCC that is anticipated to assist network build-outs in partially unserved areas. Planning, engineering, constructing fiber optic broadband internet service networks is an expensive and time-consuming endeavor. Therefore, it is imperative that we recognize that these build-outs are long-term projects. The county continues to review federal and state grant funding programs as they become available and carefully and responsibly weigh them against grant funding for broadband expansion projects that we know have already been awarded. We are taking a fiscally responsible and common sense approach with our efforts. It is important to note that some grant programs require matching funds. However, we have not seen a requirement that the local jurisdiction be the direct source of these funds. The source of matching funds can come from the ISP or from another grant program that the ISP had already been awarded. At the federal government level, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, or called NIDA, recently released their broadband infrastructure program funding opportunity. We have reviewed this program and discussed it in detail with the State's Office of Statewide Broadband. Since the FCC has already awarded Since the FCC has already awarded funding to subsidize broadband expansion in the unserved census block areas of the county to Talkie Communication, all of these uncertain areas do not qualify for the NIDA funding opportunity. At the state level, the newly formed Office of Statewide Broadband will be hosting listening sessions in the coming months in an effort to receive input from local jurisdictions, jurisdictions, and ISPs on how to structure future grant programs. The county plans to be an active participant in these listening sessions. The state will also be constructing a wireless education network for students' use on the eastern shore to cover areas that currently lack broadband using state-of-the-art wireless technology. State of Maryland is also conducting a survey speed test that is designed to gather data about the availability of internet service, including locations that lack service. Therefore, even if someone does not have internet access at their home or business, they can submit their address through this survey. The State of Maryland Internet Speed Test is available, is accessible from the link on the homepage of the county website, and we encourage all residents to participate in this. The information collected through the survey will be helpful to the state in their effort to improve mapping information and planning of future projects. My update for you. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to.
Questions, Mr. Cannon?
Yes. I really appreciate you being here, John.
Sure.
And very much I appreciate you taking the initiative to do this because, in a sense, I mean, I don't know if the Acting County Executive has reworked your job description, but, you know, IT is really handling the, the IT for the county government. And you've taken on a whole new role where you're representing the county as a whole, the citizens of Wycomico County, to try to see if we can get broadband into this county. And I appreciate you taking that initiative. The state of Maryland, I've talked to some people from the state of Maryland who have also mentioned very much so of the great work that you're doing here for Wycomico County. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. It's, it's been under Mr. Posoda's direction, so he is, he is, I certainly, I, everything I've done has been initiated by Mr. Posoda and along with other duties as assigned, as the.
If I can leap into that, Councilman Cannon, thank you very much for pointing that out. When I first came in here, I tasked, I, I found a good person and loaded him up. I said, I said, John, as your IT guy, I would need to know everything about broadband. And he has stepped up to the plate. He, he has first-name basis for all the major players in broadband. I would challenge anybody around to, to outdo him on his knowledge and what he's done. And no, there has not been a reworking of his job description because that would probably entail more, more money. So he is.
What's wrong with that, John?
Well, we're, we're, we're working on that. But thank you for pointing that out. For as most counties are, we're now being focused on, because of the pandemic, past year and a half, a new focus on, on broadband, which has been around since the early 2000 for, through the Board of Education, healthcare, and economic development. Obviously, broadband is a high priority for my administration. And we're making sure that we do it smartly, responsibly for the taxpayer, because even though we're hearing all this money that's being, you know, from, from the federal government, from the state money, or from the state government, just because it's, it's a little bit higher up on, it's still our tax dollars, we're making sure that we're doing it responsibly. I don't want to be in a position 10 years from now, somebody points to Wycomico County and say, why did they bond $200 million to put broadband in when the private sector came in a couple of years later and did it under free market systems? So we want to make sure that we do it responsibly, and that's, that's, that's our mission.
Well, that's a good point, too. I mean, that's, that's very true. You get in too quick as a government agency and then, you know, private enterprise could have done it right there for you. But this is really, I think, paramount for even the individual citizens of Wycomico County. The, dealing with the contracts, I know that Council and Actley held a town meeting on the, on the west side about a month ago, and it was packed. It really was. I thought there may have been a basketball game there because there were so many cars outside. So it was full, but it unfortunately led to more questions and answers. And there were ISP people there, there was Maryland Broadband was there, but they came outside and they're going like, well, when is it? It's tomorrow, and they're handing brochures, $60 a month. And we're like, well, I don't think that's going to be next month. So, you know, this leads to more questions. How, how will we deal with the grants? Because, I mean, it's supposed to be raining money. How is the county going to deal with these grants? The contracts with the ISP? What is our role going to be with the contracts with the ISPs, internet service providers, if any? And there's six of them out there. How, how is this going to tie in with the Board of Education? And, you know, Maryland Broadband is laying these trunks down, which is great. I think it's wonderful. We found out about it indirectly. So it would be nice to be able to have more of a concise understanding, from a council perspective, of what our role is as a county, funding and infrastructure-wise.
Well, I think, back to, to the meeting down there, it was great to see that many ISPs there that are looking to utilize that, that middle-mile trunk that was built by Maryland Broadband. Whenever Maryland Broadband, if they have a project coming about there, we have a very good open line of communication with them. So we usually know about it fairly soon. So, and we certainly can continue to update you as, as any of that information comes about. I think what you have to look at in terms of the Maryland grants is how are they going to be structured in the future? I think the structure of how those grants is going to change. That's why Rick Gordon's office up at the state is going to host some listening sessions to take input from local governments and even internet service providers on how to make the process faster, how to streamline getting money into the right hands, to the right folks that are the experts in putting this, putting cable in the ground, really. So we'll, we'll have to, we'll be a participant in that, and we'll see what changes come about and when they do release those grants at some point this fall. I think there is, there's a mixed bag of how different counties across the state look at broadband, whether they want to be involved or not be involved. I think you see some of the bigger counties who, some counties have broadband departments within their county government that might be a sub-department of their IT departments, but those are pretty significant-sized counties that can afford to do something like that. So some of those counties actually own their own broadband infrastructure. They're actually in the business in it, and they compete against other ISPs, private companies. And there are, I think, a decent amount of counties that want absolutely nothing to do with it. They, they don't feel that that's their business. They're not experts in it, and they want to see that the private company who, who knows what they're doing, has been doing it for a long time, you know, get that grant funding from the state or the federal government to them in a, in a way that doesn't put a, a large burden on a small county government and let them go to work and let them, you know, get cable plant in the ground and to, and, and make it available. I think you're going to see over the next, probably two-to-10-year timeframe in our county, you're going to see a significant build-out by private ISPs and not-for-profit ISPs, based on some funding they get through the state and the federal government, competing and even laying cable over top of each other. So you're going to see some competition for citizens, and I think that's good for everyone, especially in terms of monthly cost and how much it costs to have, you know, internet. It's not free to have it in your house. They just don't put a cable in your house, and all of a sudden you have internet and it doesn't cost anybody. You gotta, gotta pay that monthly bill that could be, you know, anywhere between $50 to $150 a month. So even if you're, you put cable past, you know, 10 residents, and, and in this county, it's, when you get outside the metro corridor, it's very, very rural, and it might take you a mile of cable to pass 10 houses sometimes that don't have service right now.
And to the point, that's why I think we are where we are, because the, the economic model just hasn't worked. So, so now we see the, the stimulus through grants or potential grants, and we need to manage that to make sure that we do it correctly and efficiently. And one can make the argument that if we want broadband throughout Wycomico County, maybe government might not be the one to get it done if it's to be done soon. So, you know, we're trying, as these initial, these are baby steps of what we're doing right now because the emphasis has been focused on, on, on getting this built out. John, you mentioned six ISPs, I believe, in the co-op. How many, how many are in the?
Twenty, 22.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I don't know the exact number. I know there's upwards of 90-some members of the co-op, and I don't know the exact number.
So in, in our conversations with the state, they are having these, what do you call them, listening?
Listening sessions.
Listening sessions over the summer. So we're going to be involved in those. It's just, it, it's such a fast-shifting, expensive proposition at enterprise, we want to make sure that we strategically plan this correctly and do it right.
One concern that I thought was legitimate was, as far as private enterprises that an individual shared, was that you may have an ISP that may only be interested in going to that 100-home neighborhood, and they will lay that cable, and they will ignore the three houses between the trunk and that's, that 100 houses in that neighborhood. And these people are looking for some assurances that in between that period that they would maybe reach out to those people, that maybe it wasn't as cost-efficient, effective for them, but those people needed the service as well.
And to that point, we, we've explored and continued to explore in our conversations with ISPs, just that. If, okay, if you have a, if you have a grant that extends to a certain area and some choose not to, not to sign up because, and this is, please note this, there is an expense to this. The homeowner eventually is going to have to pay a bill for that high-speed internet. And some will, as we found out with Morris Mill and other projects, some, some just don't want to, don't want to hook up. But we, we might offer a window in, in the grant, you know, you have a year or something so that the county eventually isn't on, continuing on the hook for a certain period, period of time past that. So it all works.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Of course, we wouldn't be here without the Rural Maryland Council being the lead advocate. When I was Chair of Rural Maryland Council, we, I came to an end. We were hosting the sessions then, but that, that was then of being a statewide focus for four years. The RMC was the one hosting all of why, really getting the actual discussion, which then led to the state funding and now the situation. And, and right at the core of that was the Tri-County Council. Greg Padgeham's done a fantastic job with actually, you know, with working with the trunk line to try to understand with, with reaching out. So I can give credit where credit due. He's fantastic work there.
Absolutely.
And anything you, anything you say as far as Chop Tank Electric? I know that they were then given legislative authority to be able to, to now do, expand, you know, broadband work, I guess, to be able to do broadband work. I don't know where that's at or if either one of you know.
I, I think we want to just speak broadly about broadband and not specific.
And I, I just, you know, I was chomping at the big to get broadband a year ago, and you two were very methodical in how you were going to approach this, and I appreciate it because I see now, especially with the, the last town hall that I, that, well, I shouldn't say I had it, I was going to have it, Mr. Councilman Holloway stepped in for me. We're now seeing more competition with these ISP providers, and I know that two ISP providers that are, that are applying for grants to cover the nanocoke farther down past Byvalve. So it's, it's really making it more competitive with the ISP providers to bring that model rather than a county getting into the business of broadband. And I, I see it's definitely moving much faster.
And, and I don't think it's a hyperbole or exaggeration to say that you're going to see that, that speed, speed, that, that competition drive things. And, and where we hear six-to-10-year build-out on some of these projects, we're encouraged that it's not going to be that long.
All right.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Monar, Mr. Posoda, thank you for the update. At this time, we're going to move into a closed work session. Thank everyone for their.
Thank you.
Participation and thank you for attending.
It's a convenience for maybe some people, right?
Okay, we're going to reconvene in the legislative session of the Wycomico County Council, and now we're meeting with the Wycomico County Public School System.
Good afternoon.
Put the mics down, and I don't know who raised them, but if you would, introduce yourselves and introduce who you have in the audience. How's everybody?
Good afternoon. Donna Hanlon, Superintendent.
Hi, good afternoon. Micah Stoffler, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Gene Malone, Chairman of the School Board, and I have with me Vice Chairman Michael Murray, Board Member Ann Suthausky, Board Member John Palmer. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer.
Tim Miles, Assistant Superintendent with Student and Family Services.
Morning.
So if you would like to start?
Sure. I think Mike is giving you a brief agenda based upon one item that you had indicated and one item that we both know needs to be addressed. So first of all, I'll say happy last day of school for the 2021 school year, and congratulations again to Mrs. Actley for the graduation of her daughter, Grace.
Yes.
We completed some graduations this weekend at the Shorebird Stadium, which went very, very well. We got blessed with the weather that looked iffy in a couple of situations, but we made it through, and all feedback was very positive about.
Good.
Having them out there. So the first item on the agenda is enrollment numbers, and wasn't really sure exactly what you were looking for here. I can go back and provide you with some information that I think I've shared with you before, and then we're happy to entertain any additional questions that you have.
Okay.
So our FTE, our Full-Time Equivalent Students for, for the 2021 school year, was 13, 865. And I don't know whether I gave you the specific decrease, but that is, was a decrease from the previous year of 4.3%. So, and the, I know you had asked last time about where those decreases are coming from. We know that a significant portion of them are from students who went to homeschooling.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was, what was the difference there, Mrs. Miles? Do you remember the difference? How many more went to homeschooling this year?
About 251.
Thank you. And then students who transferred to non-public, and the majority of those transfers were our youngest students.
Okay.
Who stayed in private daycare facilities. So you had also asked about how we know whether our enrollment will go up. I can tell you with our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten enrollment, that's going very well. Last year, at this time, we had 273 who had applied for enrollment, and this year so far, we have 790. So significant bump there. So we are seeing the reality in our prediction that our enrollment will bounce back.
Okay.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions unless there's anything we want to add before.
Ms. Harley, you said there were two topics.
Mm-hmm.
What was the other topic?
It's number two on the list, on the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have the amount of students that, that are in private school?
That are in private school?
Yes, that could be in.
Does it mean the ones we lost are their total private?
Total.
Count?
We don't have total because we don't have the enrollment numbers for all of the private schools. They would be independent of our numbers.
How many you lost?
We have a category that would include, be inclusive of.
Ms. Mills, can you bring the mic closer to you?
My apologies. Not used to not talking loud enough. We have numbers that would be inclusive, Mrs. Actley, of the students who went to private school, and I'm looking to make sure I have this, and it would be. Transferring to a non-public in the county. This year, we would be looking at approximately 200 students, and that would be inclusive of those students who may have gone to a private daycare for kindergarten or pre-kindergarten, as well as to other private schools. Yes.
All right. Any more questions on that topic? Do you have any that are unaccounted for, that all students are?
No, we take care of that by the time we report our September 30th enrollment.
Because I know that was an issue before because of the pandemic. Okay. Anymore? Okay, next.
Okay, so the, the second item is the Kerwin Implementation Coordinator. I'm, I'm thinking that you all are familiar with the language that's in this year's bill. that just passed in the legislature. And that is that we, do they have that, Mrs. Hurley? Because I don't have it in front of me to quote, but I can get it.
I did email that to everyone last week.
I got it. I got it. I'll read it to you. For each fiscal, for each of fiscal years, 22 through 26, the governing body of the county and the local school system jointly shall appoint a single implementation coordinator responsible for the implementation of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, otherwise known as Kerwin, by all governing units operating in the county. So we've been aware that this was in the, in the legislation and obviously superintendents across the state have been trying to figure out what does this mean? What's the job description? The kinds of questions that Mrs. Hurley asked me in an email. And there's still very little detail, except that I know through conversations between the Executive Director of the Superintendents Association, Mary Pat Fannin, and Sanderson? Mako's, is he the executive director?
Michael Sanderson.
Thank you, Michael Sanderson. Thank you. That there, they have agreed that this is, this position is a project manager, so to speak. And so we just see this now until we get further direction as a continuation of the work that we've already started since we've been receiving these kinds of funds for the last couple of years. Our recommendation initially is that I assign this to Dr. Stoffer as our Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Is Dr. now?
Yes, he is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. That's okay. It just makes sense to us since he's very familiar with the Kerwin, with all of the work of Kerwin and we have such a strong working relationship with the County Executive's Office and Pam Olland. We would see ourselves in our monthly meetings with Mr. Posoda and his staff continuing to update on what's happening with the implementation of Kerwin. And then, of course, when we meet with you month or quarterly, we can review that information. So basically, we just need your agreement to at least initially, until we have more guidance, agree that Dr. Stoffer would be the most logical.
I guess we can get a consensus. I'm okay with it.
I just have a question at first.
All right, Ms. Ackley.
What, what's the purpose?
That's, that's, well, we are all going on the premise that it is a project coordinator, which we know, at least in the school system, we're going to need the, you know, from all of the reading that you've done with the Kerwin Commission, that there are many, many reports that will be due, lots of different timelines for all of the elements, not just with the funding reporting, but also all of the work with CTE and early learning and college and career readiness and the tracking that we do, we will be required to do, the work in human resources with the career ladder. So we see this until we get further information as being a project manager. I think that Mrs. Fannin and Michael Sanderson talked about the fact that it was a project manager rather than anything to do with accountability because there's already going to be a high level of scrutiny. There's already the Accountability Board that is in the process of being formed right now on the state level and we're going to have to do reports and turn them in to that Accountability Board as well as the Department of Legislative Services. So, as well as MSD. So.
Right, did that?
That's how we're interpreting it at this point.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Harley?
So the law says the local governing body along with the Board of Education. So we may want to hear from Mr. Posoda, his perspective on this before you do your consensus.
Well, we can. I don't think that mic's working. If you want to share one with Mr. Stoffer, Dr. Stoffer.
Yes, Dr. Hanlon and I have spoken about this and I'm in full support of Dr. Stoffer being named as the Joint Coordinator.
Implementation.
Implementation Coordinator.
Yeah, I see.
Obviously, Dr. Stoffer would be working with lots of people on this. He's not gonna, I think my own board asked, are you going to change his job? No, we're just giving him one more thing to do.
So that's, so with what you said, Mr. Posoda, does that mean the County Executive's Office will have no oversight on any of the Kerwin matters or not?
You can use Ms. Harley's.
Well, Chair.
He's having me sit down now.
Didn't, didn't mean to create such confusion here.
As far as oversight, I don't think it'd be any more oversight than we already have. As Dr. Hanlon has expressed, we have extremely open cooperative dialogue and communication and, and so don't believe that that would change anything. And if anything, with Dr. Stoffer in that position, we have a very good relationship. And so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
More questions?
If you ask your consensus, I'm okay with it. I think it's great.
Yes, I have full confidence in Dr. Stoffer.
I would feel more comfortable waiting until you have more guidance on what that position needs to be.
It's to be implemented by the 1st of July.
It's part of the regulation, so.
So. After the accountability.
Could they give you a little more?
Give us another two weeks.
Yeah.
We have a special meeting to make that decision later.
That'll get it done quick.
Anyway, I'm okay.
John, hold on. I didn't mean that to sound, I think, like it sounded, but I guess my per, my question, why would the Kerwin Commission or whoever's in charge of all this dedicate that in that manner? It's not been dedicated that way with other matters. I'm just wondering why that would be said that that's the way it should be. Because that's the way I need to put it.
It is a good question.
Yeah, why, why would they make it the local governing body?
Yeah, I.
You don't know.
It's a state. I mean, it's, it's, well, sometimes.
I mean, you know, the Kerwin Commission went on for a number of years and there was a lot of controversy over it, you know, whether it was needed, you know, whether it could be afforded. And I'm just wondering if at some point in time that somebody on that commission made that decision that, okay, we'll give oversight to the county's government, governing bodies other than just the school board. So I guess that's where my, I was wondering where it came from.
I can't, I can't presume to.
All I can tell you is the conversation that I explained before that's occurred with, between our Executive Director of PZAM, that's the Public Schools Superintendents Association, and Mr. Sanderson, that it is more of an implementation position rather than an oversight position.
I was going to say, I interpreted it much more to be a, somebody's got to coordinate all the, it's a big, it's a big nut. So they're just making sure every county's got somebody coordinating all this.
And making sure that we are communicating.
They would communicate specifically on the blueprint.
Right.
Have you been able to speak to anyone in the Governor's Office to get guidance on how to, what, what this position should be?
No.
I don't, I don't know that anyone in the Governor's Office would know. We've, believe me, we have attempted most, I can, I can tell you that most school systems are appointing their CFOs. The only position, the only county that I know is doing something differently right now, at the last I knew, was Anna Rundle and they're hiring a position in the school system who will have oversight of Title I and the blueprint. So.
I, I see it as evolving over time because there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, but we have a deadline, like you said, on July 1st for this.
And obviously, we will entertain coming back to this if we get some kind of indication that the position is something different than just coordinating or a project manager type.
Can you give us an update at the next quarterly meeting?
Sure. Or before.
It'll probably change between now and then.
Right.
Not necessarily, but it wouldn't surprise me. Any more questions on this? Joe, did you have any, any more questions? Do we have a consensus? I think we do.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. That's all we had.
That's all you have? Do we have any more questions for the board or Dr. Hanlon?
Yeah, I'd ask you, is, is, how are you seeing the fallout from the COVID as far as with summer coming? Are you seeing that there are more kids who are lining up for some programs for remedial learning, training, et cetera? Just curious as to how we've managed to survive the fallout.
Offering about 11 different summer programs this summer.
As opposed to?
As opposed to, I don't know.
Four or five.
Four or five.
Four or five.
Right. Trying to engage students in lots of different areas of interest.
And we did see, I don't have the exact enrollment numbers for you, but we did actually see student interest and family interest wasn't as high as what we thought. I think some families and students are burnt, just like some of our teachers are burnt right now. And so I think everybody's kind of looking to kind of hit the reset button, but we do have a lot of students engaged in, in summer programming to keep that learning going. But we know that we'll be continuing to, you know, try to make up for that disruption in learning over the next several years.
Yeah, I apologize for not presenting these questions to you before to give you time. How, how are you seeing the transition for the, this group that just graduated? How's their, how's the transition percentages to, to secondary education? Is it too early to know?
I don't have the exact, exact numbers.
Yeah, again, I.
I mean, at graduations, I mean, I'm thinking anecdotally what we heard from the, you know, senior class officers that presented, they seem to be, as far as like going to a four-year college, two-year college and world of work, it seemed to be in line with previous years.
I did the Parkside graduation and I remember them saying three and a half million dollars in scholarships was awarded to that senior class. At the price of college, that may not be a lot of years, but it's a lot of money. That's a lot of students going to college.
Yeah, sure is. Okay. Thanks.
Is there a cost to the summer programs or the remedial programs?
Offered.
Okay. Very good. My question was on the, the compensatory education and recovery services. What is, what's that going to look like in the county in as far as, in the next budget year? Do you anticipate that being a high dollar?
Dollar-wise, I couldn't speak too specifically, but I can say that all families of students with IEPs have been contacted with regard to compensatory services. If at any point the family feels differently than the direction things are taking, we encourage them to get in touch with their case managers. We are prepared to fully deliver all services that are needed to keep the, the students moving forward. But again, just to reiterate, that link between the family and the case manager or the school administrator is so critical because we don't want any student to not receive services to which they are entitled and truly need.
Is that who's reviewing all of them? The administrator for the school or their case manager?
The IEP teams are looking at that. The case managers, definitely, they've been in communication with all families with regard to what's been identified. And they were also in communication with those same families earlier in the year when we had one of the earlier transitions. So this has definitely been an ongoing process. I mean, as we know, communication within special ed is ongoing anyway, but it's, it's been heightened even more, which is a good thing. It's a good thing to keep that, that communication going for the benefit of the students.
Does we have with IEPs in the county?
Off the top of my head, I'd be afraid to give an exact number and be wrong on that one.
I was just curious.
Someone may remind me if I was wrong, so I want to make sure I get it right.
I believe it's 12%.
Okay.
Yes. Damage-wise, that is appropriate.
So we're doing compensatory education or services for, that's quite a caseload of.
Only those who qualify.
Not all students would, would need the compensatory ed. There, there may be students who have shown the progress and the growth that we would expect, anticipate and want for them. But again, that's between that case manager and the family and meeting the needs of the student. So it won't be all students that would be receiving that.
And in terms of a dollar amount, those expenditures would, would be, we could use ESER funds for that, ESER III, the American Rescue Plan funding. Sorry, lots of, lots of acronyms.
I was just looking at it from the budget point of where that was going to.
I know we had a short discussion on this, one of the previous meetings, maybe it's been a year ago. Any postgraduate students come back and play sports for varsity? Remember they were allowed to?
There was talk, but it was never approved. It was never approved.
It wasn't approved because I know the state, well, I thought the state approved it.
They had talked about it, but it was never acted on.
I, I thought that would have been very awkward.
Yes, we agree.
Parkside's quarterfinal game was to be determined. Do we have a time on that yet?
I do not.
Okay.
I know lacrosse is playing today, actually lacrosse and baseball both, I think.
That was my next question. Any other, who's lacrosse, Parkside's?
Parkside's, they're the last two teams we have.
They're the last two teams. Good luck to them. Any more questions?
Do you know when, do you have a, a timeframe as when you'll go back to your board meetings pre-COVID? I missed the deadline to register to, to give public comments, so I was just wondering when we, when you think the registration part, will that always be?
Probably stay to that. No, we're most likely will eliminate the maximum of 10 because we never had a maximum before, but we'll probably stay with the three minutes like you guys do and have pre-registration.
And it'd always be pre-register the day before?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And good luck this summer. Hope everyone stays safe.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn. Thank you all.